Yeah, everyone just has to speak up. Because we have mics.
The mic's over there, okay. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I want to call to order the special meeting of the Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors. Today is November 3rd, 2020. We're getting a slightly late start at 5:24 PM. And would you please stand and join me in the closing remarks.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we do all.
Yeah, let's see here. Why don't I do the introductory remarks? That should cover all this stuff. And then we'll do roll call, is that all right?
Yes.
I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under Governor's executive orders in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. The agenda states that the public may view this meeting online as there will be no public location for attending in person. This meeting is being livestreamed online at the district's website. As stated on the agenda, members of the public who wish to comment on any items within the jurisdiction of the district or any item on the agenda were given the opportunity to submit comments by emailing the district, and such comments will become part of the board meeting record. And did we have any general comments?
We did not, Mr. President.
Thank you. So we will be clear about who's presenting and all that. We do have all the board members here, so we don't have to worry too much about communicating that way. So why don't we move on to roll call?
Mr. President, if I may just real briefly, I just want to make it clear for anyone who is observing the meeting that we have three board members as opposed to five. Now, that is because the item on the agenda has two items for which we're complicit of interest involving three of the five board members. About two years ago, we went through a pre-a requalification process, which is allowed under the state law to requalify one board member who constitutes a co-op, and that is of our President John Powell. So as a result, that's why we have three board members in the room who are non-conflicted or had been requalified in order to avoid any conflict of interest. Thank you, Mr. President.
Right, thank you for that clarification on having all the members here, because there are only three of us. All right, roll call.
Good evening, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
And Director Dow.
Here.
Thank you.
Good, so we have one action item before us today, 6A, which is the award construction contract for the Inland Recharge Project Phase Two. Presentation by David Wilson, Board of Directors.
Good evening. Purpose of this item is to award a construction contract for the Oasis Inland Recharge Project Phase Two, specification number 2020-36. Staff recommendation is to reject the bid submitted by Ames Construction Incorporated as non-responsive, reject a bid protest received from Suket Construction LLC as moot, and authorize the General Manager to execute a contract with Suket Construction LLC as the most responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of $46 million, $88,353, and $0.70. The authorization or the request before today is also to execute an amendment number one to Task Order Number One, with Dole Consultants Incorporated, in the amount of $794,124, provide engineering services during construction, as the engineer of record. And Task Order Number Twelve to Atlas Technical Consultants LLC to provide geotechnical services during construction in the amount of $249,860. A total requested amount which includes a 5% contingency in the amount of $2,579,832 CBWD engineering, cultural monitoring, CBWD inspection, and permitting with Riverside County is a total of $50,425,769,070. With the board's permission, I'll skip to the project description. Okay, so the project advertised the bids on September 1st, 2020. On October 28th, 2020, seven bids were received and read publicly. The lowest bid was submitted by Ames Construction Incorporated in the amount of $45 million, $233,898. Staff reviewed the low bid submitted by Ames and determined that Ames' bid did not comply with the bid requirement identified in the documents, which is to list three projects of similar size, scope, and complexity, where the bidder's work was over $10 million and which had been completed within the last three years. One of the three projects listed by Ames is CBWD's Highway 86 Transmission Main Booster Station project, which is not yet completed. As such, staff has determined Ames' bid could be non-responsive. Therefore, staff then reviewed the second lowest bidder submitted by Suket and determined that it wasn't responsive to the requirements in the solicited projects. On November 2nd, 2020, CBWD received a bid protest from Suket. The bid protest alleges that Ames' bid should be rejected as non-responsive because it fails to list Northern Digital Incorporated as a subcontractor, fails to list three projects completed within the past three years, and fails to contain Ames' corporate seal. However, as staff of legal counsel has already performed an independent review of Ames' bid and determined it to be non-responsive, staff recommends that the bid protest be rejected as moot. We did receive a response from Ames, and I understand that Ames' representative is here and will be speaking to you all this evening, so I will not comment on that, but I will be available for questions after that. Based on what I've stated here, the staff recommends that the board reject Ames' bid as non-responsive, propelling to list the three requisite completed projects, reject a bid protest submitted by Suket as moot, and award the contract for this project to Suket as the lowest responsible bidder submitting a responsive bid. The project is a multi-year construction project that is included in the FY '21 East Whitewater Replenishment Fund capital improvement budget in the amount of $500,000. It is anticipated that $8 million will be spent this fiscal year with the remaining balance to be budgeted and spent next fiscal year. However, if the progress of the project begins to exceed the budget during this fiscal year, then staff will request a budget amendment to increase the budget to reflect the progress of construction work and reduce the budget for next fiscal year. The budget for this expenditure will be funded through a combination of draws on the Bank of the West line of credit. The decision to use Bank of the West will be made or is made based on market conditions, timing of funding needs, and available capacity under the line of credit. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Okay, so before we get to callers, is there any comments or questions for David by the board? And I imagine we'll have another opportunity for board questions and comments after we hear other commenters.
I think we can go to the other end.
Wait, okay. All right, so do we have some folks on the phone that wish to comment?
We do, Mr. President. I believe we have one or two representatives that would like to speak on Ames' behalf. And so if I can please have the first speaker present.
And that first speaker would be?
I believe that's Howard, I'm not sure if that or Howard, if he's going to present.
There are three individuals on the line, so we have to pass the one to start, and then we can go to the other two.
Correct. So I just didn't know who. I believe there are three individuals, but I did not receive a request from all three, so I wasn't sure who exactly was going to speak first. They didn't identify on that. Angie, will you be speaking first, Mr. Howard?
No, ma'am. I'm happy to answer any question that the board members or others may present, but with the board's permission, I would just speed any time allotted for me to Mr. Tim Wilson to main.
Okay, if Mr. Wilson would like to speak, then we can open up the floor to Mr. Wilson to provide comment.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Tim Wilson. I'm the Vice President and General Manager for Ames Construction here in Corona, California. On behalf of Ames Construction, I would like to thank the board for this opportunity to comment on the Oasis Inland Recharge Project Phase Two. Ames' standby by the bid submitted on October 28th, 2020 is being accurate, responsive, and responsible. Contrary to any outside comments or letters, there are no inconsistencies containing the bid documents which would cause the submitted bid to be non-responsive. The information contained in the bid document does not constitute any material differences from what is required in the specifications. I'm sure by now you have a copy of Ames' submitted bid protest letter which demonstrates that Ames' bid is responsive to all material requirements of this solicitation. Ames examined the specification, carefully considered what was made as to the correctness of the information provided during the course of the bidding for this project, and as our protest letter points out, Ames was mindful of Section 2113, Instruction Two, and Information for Bidders in Section 4143, Bid Forms, in submitting the correct information as described in each section. It was our understanding under Section 14.7 of the general conditions that the headings are inserted for convenience do not constitute parts of the general conditions. Any interpretation of section headings that contradicts the unambiguous terms of solicitation requirement disregarded as per the terms of solicitation. In other words, the headings should never be allowed to override the plain words of the text. Had Ames understood this meaning of specification, our focus was to make sure we provided the correct information as outlined and prescribed by the specification. Section 4143, Bid Forms 1.5 requires bidders to provide only projects that are similar in size, scope, and complexity to demonstrate bidder's ability to perform the required work. The bidder must specify a minimum of three projects of similar size, scope, and complexity where bidder's work was $10 million or more within the past three years. The plain text of the provision does not require that the listed project be completed, only that they are representative of the work current within the last three years. The projects Ames listed meet the prescribed criteria and also demonstrate Ames' recent experience to substantially perform work of similar size, scope, and complexity. The listed project also exemplifies Ames' ability to work with major California water agencies in the successful completion of projects which are vital to the local communities and stakeholders. The inclusion of Highway 86 does not affect the price or scope of work. Ames is committed to performing for the district, meaning whatever questions the district may have about including it should not have been grounds for disqualification. But the decision to disqualify Ames carried the cost of approximately $855,000, which is the difference between Ames and the next lowest submitted bid. We hope that both CBW staff and the board consider the information that Ames has provided and render Ames as both a responsive and responsible bidder for this project. As Ames is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, I respectfully ask that you award the project to Ames. Ames Construction appreciates this opportunity to address the board. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other?
Sylvia, is there anybody else on the line who's had, just to be sure?
Sure. Mr. Howard, was there somebody else from your agency, either Mr. Miller or Coleman, on the line that would like to speak?
Not to my knowledge, no, ma'am. Again, happy to answer any questions the board may have, but no further affirmative comments.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the line that I may have missed that would like to speak on the item? Okay, and it appears there are no official speakers, Mr. President.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask counsel to provide their advice and analysis of comments.
So, Mr. President, members of the board, my colleague Mary Beth Colbert is on the line, and she can speak to the direct issues that were just raised and what our legal opinion is.
Good evening, Mary Beth. Yes, we did receive the bid protest from Ames earlier today, and we have, we've been through it in some detail. And the real distinction here is kind of a splitting hairs analysis of that one section that Mr. Wilson referred to. Specifically, there are a couple of different sections in the bid form that require bidders to provide a list of the projects that they have been involved in. One of those lists is for current projects and ongoing projects. And in that, in that area of the bid, Ames submitted 15 projects, five of which were noted to be complete in November or December of 2020. The following list that is required is titled List of Completed Projects. And it goes on to say duplicate page is needed for listing additional completed projects. So when Mr. Wilson refers to the fact that the section didn't require completed projects, I think it flies in the face of the plain language and intent of that. And he refers back to a general condition, not a bidding document, but a general conditions requirement that does not impact this and does not cross-reference between these documents that refers to headings being secondary to the narrative of the text beneath the heading. So it's very clear to us that it was a list of completed projects within the last three years. On that project, it does say a minimum of three projects. They listed just three projects, and one of them is the Highway 86 Transmission Main. And during the performance period, or in the performance period area of the bid, they said the period of performance was August of 2018 to December of 2020. And because it's not yet December of 2020, by the four corners of the bid document, this is not responsive to the requirement that the project be complete at time of bid submission.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if I left anything out, or if you'd like a more detailed description of our analysis.
Thank you, Mary Beth. I thought that was clear, clearly stated. So staff recommendation with support from our legal opinion is to do all the things that are, I'm not going to try to list all, that's what's listed in the BIA, which includes rejecting the Ames bid and awarding to Suket.
I have a question for, is it Mary Beth? Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes, I can.
Are we obligated under the law to reject this bid based on what you've just described as the reason why we can do so? Or are we also allowed or have the authority to not reject it and award it?
Well, I think that there's a nuance there. I think that a court would decide based on the four corners of the document whether or not, in fact, it was responsive. In our opinion, it is not. So if you were to decide to go down that road and, you know, a legal action was commenced, they would look at the facts presented, they would look at the plain language of the document, and they would determine whether or not it was fair to the other bidders for you to award to someone who did not demonstrate compliance with this experience requirement. And we believe that the most prudent action would be to reject it as a deviation, whether it is a material or immaterial deviation, you have the absolute right to reject the bid as not complying with the four corners of the bid document. And so we believe the most prudent path forward is to reject this bid as non-responsive and move on to the number two bidder.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mr. President, this is Angie Howard. May I have just a few moments to respond?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. With respect to the question about whether it's within the district's ability, it is very plainly within the district's ability to waive any perceived deviation or nonconformity with respect to past performance. The table that Ms. Colbert was reading from, and that again is excerpted in the bid protest letter submitted by Ames very clearly and unindicately states that any failure to meet or exceed the past performance requirement may, a permissive, a permissive verb, not a mandatory, mandatory one, may cause the bid to be rejected. And certainly, the district reserved the right earlier in the specification solicitation to waive any irregularities. Past performance, you know, it is an element of the bidder's ability to perform the work. It's, in this instance, it has no impact on the price or the time required to execute the work, so it is sort of as a matter of procurement law, not a material, material element of the bid, though it is admittedly within the district discretion to require strict conformance with the terms of the solicitation. And, you know, at the end of the day, the question becomes, is this a material issue such that it's worth the expenditure of $855,000 additional thousands of dollars to disqualify Ames as the low bidder who is already performing work for the district?
And I'm happy to respond to that. President Powell, if I could have just a moment?
Certainly.
I would say that, you know, the, of course, your contract language is permissible. It is designed that way and is intentionally that way, so that if there was a situation where staff and legal counsel recommended that there was substantial compliance with the, with the requirements, that you would in fact be able to waive a requirement. It does not require you to, and as, you know, as we've been talking about, but in this situation where you have such a critical component of needing to have just a very large technical project and to have only three projects, which is a minimum, that's fine, but have one of them an ongoing current district project really flies in the face of the, of the underlying requirement of having three projects completed and closed out and done, which I think if you look at how the bid form is set up, where you have an opportunity to present your ongoing project in one chart, and then you are requested to give your relevant experience in the next chart under the heading of completed project, that to list a ongoing project with listed that the bid won't be complete until December 20th really, you know, again flies in the face of the intent and what the other bidders all did correctly. They all listed completed projects.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
And if I may just real briefly, Mr. President, this is just for the General Counsel. Based on what my colleague just said, we weigh what is the legal opinion in terms of the implementation of the contract, as well as what the legal exposure is to the district. And in not enforcing this particular requirement, in our opinion, it could lead to legal exposure from other bidders who did in fact follow that rule.
Thank you.
So I don't like it, and I'm sure Ames doesn't like it. And recognizing that every project that comes before the board is unique in to itself, your recommendation is, for all meaningful purposes, consistent with the way you approach all duty evaluations and recommendations to this board. And there's nothing special about this that is causing you to judge one versus the other. In this instance, that's not the same standard of practice and procedure that you use, generally speaking, on every project a district brings with both boards.
Correct. That is correct, so the legal counsel is finding this.
Okay, cool, okay. Well, thank you, commenters, and thank you, counsel, for providing us some analysis and opinion. I am personally satisfied. I mean, I agree, I don't love it. I mean, and we do have discretion, but I don't think this is an instance where that discretion would make sense.
No, I'm a lowest bidder kind of guy, but I think that staff has, you know, done the work on this and evaluated the proposals that are presented and are making a recommendation to us consistent with their practice. And we've been advised by counsel based on the adequacy of the presentations, and I think I'm prepared to report.
Thank you. As am I, shall we?
Sure. I mean, I just, I really don't like it either.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound like it changes their ability to perform the work, and we want to be strict about it, if it costs about another million dollars to a project that I don't know how much it's creased already from the last estimate that we had. I mean, I thought that the cost of the entire project was around that price, and this is Phase Two, so.
But don't you think if they start threading the needle on this, and we're going to be threading the needle on every single deal and never get it right? This seems to me to be right, as much as I don't like it, it seems right.
I think it's our best, our best capo is to set recommendations. All right, so is there a motion to?
Mr. President, I would be honored to move staff's recommendation as presented on this highly important and very special project.
Thank you. I'll second, sure. I second Director Dow's motion. And so, any other comment before we vote? I mean, I'll say this, it is an important project. It's one of those generational ones, it's a big one. And we really need to get it out. So we have a motion and a second without any further ado. Big roll call? Roll call? Why don't we do a roll call?
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
And Director Dow.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this motion passes 3-0? And?
Please go into business before the board decision.
We do not have any, anything in our closed session, right?
Correct.
No, yes, we don't have right, I mean, at this point, there was not a, you put closed session, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before we adjourn, I'd like a moment of personal privilege.
The floor is yours.
If you want to take your mask off, sir.
Then you'll see me crying.
We all look the other way.
I didn't think, I didn't think this would happen, but I'll make it through it. When I was asked to run for the board of the Coachella Valley Water District six years ago, I never met my thought I was running for public office. But I had a pro class friend who said, does a position, think you want to do? And in sixty days, I ran the race and won and got elected to the board. And spent the last six years of my life learning about a really special enterprise, an enterprise that's important to water security throughout California and the West. But it's an organization that for a hundred years has had an impact in water. And to have the honor of being on the board of this district for the last six years is something that I will always treasure. Many, if not all of you know that I've been recently appointed the Executive Director and General Manager of the Salt and Sea Authority. Bill Roseland-Travers' last day is today, and unfortunately, my first day there is tomorrow. And as a result of that, I can't both serve on this board and serve as the Executive Director of the Salt and Sea Authority. So it'll be necessary for me to resign my position as a member of this board effective midnight tonight. Fortunately, CBWD is a member of the Salt and Sea Authority, so I'm not going very far. I'm going to continue to have an impact on the valley and all of it. Many of the things that affect the district affect the sea, they're highly integrated, so I just view it as an opportunity for me to further serve more generations of people in the Coachella Valley, to work with the people that I've known and loved for the last six years, and I look forward to continuing to seeing you and working with you in the community, but I'm going to miss you. So thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Doctor. It's been an honor to serve with you. It's not goodbye, so we're going to be seeing you, and it's just a different half, really. Look forward to what great things you can do. Look forward to what great things you can do.
Well, I would say, you know, it's been a special privilege for me to work with my fellow board members. We've not always agreed, but we've always been agreeable. And I think together, we've learned both about each other and about things that we never thought of, and working with the best staff that anybody can hope for. And I guess it would be irresponsible of me not to thank my constituents in Division One for giving me the honor to serve in this position. So, I said it.
Congratulations. I'm going to be seeing you. But I, you know, I, you know, six years, it feels like it just, you know, it was just yesterday. And I know that I, in six years, I've learned a lot, and you've been involved in so many other things with Aqua, and, you know, going up to D.C., so, you know, you were going pretty hard, so I know you have a tremendous amount of information that you've learned, and I think we're happy that you're taking that to the Salt and Sea Authority.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, appreciate it. So, there's one last thing you could do for us, to do a move adjournment of your last meeting, if you're so inclined.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion for adjournment for my last best time here at the Coachella Valley Water.
Right. I don't think we need a second for that. We don't. All right. Will you stand adjourned? Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you.